Welcome all. For the Village of Pleasantville, today is Monday, October 28. Item on agenda is a visit from the Arts Committee. We have before us Stuart Vance and Marlene Canopy. And online, we have Kathleen Breckling from Arts Westchester, as well as Janet Langsum, emeritus director at Arts Westchester.
Hello.
Hello, Janet.
Hi, everybody.
All right. Take it away.
What a pleasure it is to be with you all in Pleasantville.
It's a pleasant thing to have you with us.
Thank you.
I have those images.
It's a great town and a lot of good arts in town. The Jacob Burns and the Arc Stages and some concerts at the church. Anyway, you guys have done a terrific job in bringing the arts to your community.
And we appreciate your help in making that happen. All right, Stuart, are you the?
Yes.
We're going to start with Marlene.
Okay, so I am now the sole chair of the Public Art Committee. And the reason for that will be apparent at some point. And I didn't boot him out. But thank you so much for hearing us out at 7:00 PM tonight. This is Stuart Vance. He founded the Public Art Committee with me how many years ago?
Pre-pandemic.
Pre-pandemic, wow.
It's like B.C.
Exactly.
P.P.
As part of our committee back then was Janet Langsum, just because we thought we needed someone like her to get us moving along. And I think at some point, you will hear from Kathleen Breckling, who is now the CEO of Arts Westchester. She's filling in some very big shoes. So by the way.
Sorry, I'll just say hello. Hello, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here with you tonight. Also, just sitting in on the webinar side of it is Lee Taylor-Mickelson and Adam Chow. Adam Chow is our Director of Exhibitions. Lee works with us on a number of public art projects. So they're here to keep their finger on the pulse of where this meeting lands.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we're going to do this in two parts. We're going to hear from Stuart first, just because, you know, I think for the benefit of how many years it's been, he's going to review what has been going on so far. And then we're going over to you, Kathleen and Janet and Adam and Lee.
Okay, so going back to the, actually to the pandemic era, Marlene and I were talking about a project for the Arts Committee, for the Public Arts Committee. And we landed on the idea of doing our first maiden voyage as a mural. And plans were made. We thought that the Jackson Alley was a really excellent place to do a mural project, which later we found out maybe was not so good because of certain technical problems. But as you go along, I'm going to still talk about it as a possible location. And we put together this idea called the Walking Murals, which I did present to the board way back then. I don't know if you guys remember. I don't think you were there on the board at that time. And the basic idea of it was that it was a kind of a celebration of the community coming through the pandemic and with the theme of the walking village being expressed through these murals on all of the walls. That was the original plan. It was very grandiose now that I see. But all of the walls along the Jackson Alley, these gigantic figures, you know, walking along with the people walking down the alley. And so Chad Kraus and Greg Nemec and I kind of put together this plan to photograph members of the community. And we did. We used the Jacob Burns Media Lab. They had a big green screen room that we used to do that. And we photographed something over 100 people. It was very successful. People were really excited about the project. The Jacob Burns was excited about the project. And the fact that one of their walls was their wall, the back of their building, was fortuitous. And then it kind of came to a halt just because we ran into some technical problems having to do with the cables going across the walls and also just the sheer size of it just seemed like the management of it was bogging down. Fast forward to fairly recently, I think this year, 2024, a grant for $25,000 from Mary Jane Shimskey's office was given to Pleasantville for the purpose of creating public art. And so the idea of a mural was sort of reborn. And this is where Janet and Kathleen come in. I believe the money is now sitting with them. And Kathleen will probably talk about her idea. And we had a conversation just last week about it with the idea of Arts Westchester administering a mural project in Pleasantville. What the project is, is unknown at this moment. One of the reasons why I left the committee was because I actually want to take my idea, a new version of it, a smaller version of it, of the walking murals idea, and submit it to Arts Westchester or to whatever the jury is going to be to decide what this mural would be. So Kathleen and Arts Westchester would administer that, the proposal process. And hopefully, when all the dust is settled, a mural will emerge out of all of that. So the important point is there is some funds for this. And there are really, really expert people at Arts Westchester who have had a lot of experience with public art, who are willing to administer this. And there would be an RFP that would go out to artists in the area, you know, asking for submissions. I myself, being a local artist, would submit my idea. And that's where we are at this point.
Okay, great.
Can we ask some questions about the process, about how that would work?
Kathleen is going to explain.
Okay, she's going to explain.
Yeah. Kathleen, are you there?
Yep, that's my cue. And I apologize that I'm not on video. I'm making my way back from seeing family in Toronto. And you don't want to see the current background. So. I have not been detained yet, but so there's probably some produce that I'm not supposed to be bringing back. But in any, so, you know, and Janet, of course, please, please pop in. But we've had a lot of success, especially in first-time projects for a location and selecting artwork through an open call request for proposals. What that allows for is community engagement at multiple levels, right? At the beginning, in terms of shaping the parameters for the request for proposals. And then potentially at the end too, when you kind of get down to the things everybody loves the most, creating another opportunity for people to weigh in. That process is really important in developing community buy-in. The good news is the grant is actually for $35,000. And my team corrected me on that. And so there is room in that for some administration as well. So the way that we manage the request for proposals is we work with the committee. We work with the relevant stakeholders to put together a package that outlines the goals of the project, both aesthetic and community. We put that out. We usually run that for about six to eight weeks where it's open call. We work with the artists. We do a site visit if necessary. We prepare a package that includes photos of the site dimensions. And then when the proposals come in, we do an initial review to make sure everything is together. And then we prepare a package for the selection committee to review and narrow down to finalists. We typically recommend that when we get to the top two or three artists, that we provide a little finalist, like stipend or honorarium. We give them feedback from the panel to allow them to create final designs. And those might be what's ultimately presented either to the common council or publicly for some comments. The other questions that have seemed to come up as to whether or not the mural would be painted or fabricated. There's lots of different ways to make murals look spectacular and be temporary as opposed to directly painted on the wall. So depending on where you all decide is the best site, we can tackle it anyway. Our role in the project is really to manage it from beginning to end in terms of putting out the RFP, circulating it, managing the submissions, the artist questions. And then ultimately, if it's fabricated, we would work with the artist and a fabricator to design the best method for that, whether it's painted on panels or printed and installed, and then work with the appropriate entities through installation.
That's it. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Nope, that's sort of the cliff note in terms of process. And I had shared, and I'm happy to share, an example of some of the RFPs we've done in the past, both for painted murals and for fabricated murals.
Great. So how would this selection be? Who would be on that selection?
Tell me a little bit more. Oh, sorry. Tell me a little bit more about who's on the Public Art Committee currently.
Would that be the?
No, no, because, you know, again, I want it to be a clear and transparent process. And so it'll be a new group altogether that I will put together to make the selection. Because then, you know, because Stuart was in that committee, I don't want there to be an idea that there's a bias amongst this group of committee members.
To be determined.
To be determined, yeah.
Okay. So Kathleen, is there a sort of a sense for what scale of mural can be accommodated within the grant money?
Jackie Lang says.
Sorry, it does depend on what the final fabrication method is. If you're talking, you get a lot more out of a painted mural. You get a lot more from a painted mural. But the cost for the fabrication, again, also depends on what the final product is and then how we work with the artist. So I think ultimately, what I would say or what I would recommend is I know that there's, I know a few people have different ideas of what the optimal site is. And if we can start there and working with whoever the property owners and what their needs are, we can do the scale kind of based on the location and work kind of backwards into the budget based on the available fund.
Okay. In the submissions.
I'm going to jump in here for a minute and just say, first of all, I have lived in the area and I am on this committee because Marlene asked me to be on because of my relationship with Arts Westchester. I have been on the committee. Barry Shankman also on the committee. Marlene.
Oh, you want me to provide the rest is Lisa.
I just thought it would be good to say who's on the committee. But anyway, I suggested to Marlene that since there was some question about whether the Jackson Avenue site was the best site. And also, I think I would urge the city and the town to consider more than one mural. I suggested to Marlene that she take a look at a couple of different sites in the event that there were a choice. There is another alley. I'm not sure what they call it. Someone.
Doesn't have any.
We have pictures of the sites that.
Yeah, there is this one I missed that she suggested, and that's the Chase Building. And Janet, I didn't, I mean, I don't think that we can include that because I think there's something, you know, it's sort of a possible development happening there. So not sure the owners would be open to having like art there.
In the original planning commission, application for 70 memorial plots of the concept drawings of that building show a mural on the side of the building.
That's true, yeah.
So, and it's monumental. So, I mean, that would really have quite an impact. I can't imagine the owner would have a very good way of getting around allowing that since he showed it on his original application.
Is that still happening?
I mean, it was shown as a conceptual idea. There's certainly no commitment on his part to do it. He would certainly have to be engaged. And if he was happy with it, be happy to have it happen. And if he wasn't to negotiate. Do you want me to show you these?
I think it would be difficult to back out of the theory, even if like a specific image might not be to it.
Yeah, I mean, at one point, I think they decided that they weren't going to commission a mural themselves. But, you know, it would certainly be worth asking. So I'm curious, Kathleen, I'm sure the answer will be it depends on the artist and so on. But is there a sense of the timeline for the project?
So the answer is yes. We do have to have the mural completed by June 2025, according to the funding.
So you got to get knocking, I would say. Right?
Right. And we're at a good place because, as I mentioned, sort of, we like to leave, you know, it takes a few weeks to put together the RFP. It takes about two months for the RFP to live out in the world. And then, you know, you want to give another month or so to review, make the decisions, do the feedback. And then, you know, you want, depending on, again, the method of installation, you want to be able to get to that when the weather starts to get good in April, May. So that's really your target installation date. And that's on the public fund. And I would also say, if you have a developer that's shown a mural, it would be nice if they covered the cost of that so you could stretch the grant to other opportunities.
You want to buzz through these pictures, Marlene?
No, I'm sure.
You tell me.
Sure.
So, mind you, none of these, correct me if I'm wrong, owners of none of these buildings have yet been approached.
Right.
So there's no suggestion that they're in the game or not?
Right.
So that's entirely true because we have talked to Jacob Burns about their.
Well, that's the only one.
Okay. This is adjacent to the Burns, the side of I Fettish Optique on Manville. This is the back of 42 Wheeler. I can tell you that Metro North requirements are such that I cannot imagine that's an option. It's massively expensive to do anything above the tracks. This is the Jackson Alley.
Yeah.
Now a bit different because of the fat root construction at the end, the far end. This is the end of Lucy's.
The back of Lucy's.
Yeah, but that's a very visible spot.
And then this was the other alley Janet had made reference to, the exit from the Bedford Road parking lot between Soul and the forthcoming Loulou's.
The reason that I suggested just to look at some of these sites is because I know Wheeler Avenue very well. And it's a restaurant and hub for socialization in Pleasantville. And, I mean, it's nice to have one mural, but it would be even nicer if the street were enlivened with a number of murals eventually. I don't mean to say that, you know, there's funding for that. But I think if we were to, you know, show how creative it would make the community and how people would love it, I think, you know, it would bring a lot of creativity to the scene.
Sure. Yeah, and the examples that we saw, the most visible one was the first one, which is a relatively small space, right? But I can see, you know, we talked about this money could possibly spread to a couple of different locations. I imagine depending on the materials that are being used and the size. But maybe that would be something that's worth considering if we were to choose spots that were, you know, a little bit more visible.
You'd like to show this. Oh, is the render?
Yes, I read them.
Oh, yeah. I would also just want to point or ask if before the mural is installed, maybe it has some sort of writing or explanation about it because I know a lot of people asked about the other mural that was done. And they were like, what's going on or what is this? I think just an explanation before something goes up is also important. I would also think that even though we can't do this in Metro North space, that would be amazing because it just gets so much visual attraction from a lot of the people that come in and out of Pleasantville. But as far as like from a visual standpoint, it doesn't have to be on an eyesight level, like where murals are painted. That's something you guys go for, like, because when people walk out of the train station, like you're saying on Wheeler Avenue, you can't necessarily paint on what is Pub Street. But there is also the other end, which is near Falafel Taco. There's sort of like a larger section above it. Not that that's ideal, but I just mean as far as visualization, I would love people to, the people that come out of Pleasantville, the people that come out of the farmer's market to be able to see something like that. Like, that's a really big hub and it's a space. I just, instead of an alleyway, we need to say, would be, and obviously, the one that's in the render, I know it'd be great too.
Okay, so one of the next steps, we need to move on. We have a crowd here for our next subject. What is the best way forward? You're going to put together an RFP, Kathleen. But that requires we identify the sites, right?
Right. And so we can, we need to have some direction from Pleasantville or from the Public Art Committee on what locations want to be considered in the RFP. And then from there, we would work with the relevant committees to put together the guidelines for the RFP. There also is going to be some time here, I would imagine, that because we need to figure out how the mural is going to be applied. So the first thing that we need is the location, location or location that we want to address with the project.
Okay. And clearly, we wouldn't want to put these locations in any RFP until we have the owner's approval of the idea, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so that's the next step. So will the Arts Committee take the lead on pursuing these possibilities?
So I've sent an email over to the Burns and I haven't heard back from them because, again, it's been a number of years. You know, I just want to make sure they're still, you know, open to doing this on the back of their walls. And I don't know the owner of the alleyway.
I do. I can give you her contact.
Okay. And would you like me to approach her or?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I can also, I mean, there are a couple of people who know her quite well and I'll connect you with all of them.
Okay, great.
Can you put her in touch with Vito also?
Sure. Absolutely.
For a Sunday memorial plot.
I think at this moment, what we would like is the support of the town to go forward with planning this mural with Arts Westchester.
So I think you have that support. Is that fair to say?
I think you have.
How long is your report?
I mean, it might be permitted or it might be transient. I mean, when I say transient, extended transient, right?
Yeah, I mean, murals do have a lifespan. And depending on the materials and the kind of paint and so forth and so on, you know, they're going to eventually deteriorate. And some people actually plan for that and they plan to refurbish them, you know, as part of, as part of the, you know, the ongoing project. We haven't discussed that at all.
I was curious.
You know, there's another space I just want to interject that just occurred to me. The retaining wall, the new memorial retaining wall, that big blank wall. Kind of a nice space to have something colorful in.
It might be. It might be. That retaining wall.
Yeah.
So much there.
Oh, my God. Yes, it might be, but I can't, can't even consider it right now. It's a PTSD.
But maybe, can I suggest just logistically, if Marlene reaches out to a bunch of people, we then reconvene with her if it would be helpful to you to get some feedback, like, you know, once you have more information about possible occasions. If you'd rather just run with it yourself, you know, let me know. But it would be helpful.
Well, one of the reasons why I'm encouraging the partnership with Arts Westchester is that they've done this with, you know, municipal governments. And, you know, when you're doing something, it's a public art project, it's important that, you know, we have this sort of like a length of time where it allows public engagements. And that's critical because, you know, that's why Stuart is stepping off because we want there to be, you know, fair and clear.
This sounds great. I don't mean to cut it short. We could talk for a long time and we will. We've got a bunch of stuff to do, but I think you have our hearty endorsement to move forward with this will help chew and touch with various potential players. And I think obviously, the board will be interested in the vetting of the final selections, perhaps offer some opinions on that front. But Kathleen, thank you. Janet, as always, thank you. Marlene, Stuart, and everybody behind you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So that when people don't read it and complain on Facebook, we can point to it. Maybe you are.
Yeah. I agree completely on that.
Thank you.
All right.
Which one is it on here?
Hello. Nice to be back for my favorite subject. No, we're now at 7:15 PM, even though it's 7:30. Hello, Doug Panero. Hello.
So we've had a capacity for pain and suffering, but not as much as the former director who's going to go see the Giants play tonight.
He said, he sent us a note and he said, he's sorry, he can't be there tonight because he is in Pittsburgh to watch the Giants get. Pardon? So can you move forward a bit? We do not have a microphone on at the moment.
You can put them on.
Can we?
You put them on.
Yeah. All right, Doug, welcome.
Thank you.
So a couple of things up front. Bruce sent a note. Shall I read that note? All right. Are these the mics working? Are we getting any marks? I'll try to speak in my most ventorian tones. This is from Bruce Figler. Hello, trustees and friends of the music festival. My apologies for not being able to attend tonight's meeting. I'm currently in Pittsburgh, fully expecting to see the New York Giants get throttled by the Steelers.
I'm a Giants fan.
I want to start by thanking you all for your support over the last nine years. While I was at the helm of the music festival, I'd like to thank you all for your ideas of improving the festival, many of which are being seriously considered by festival management for the future. There are a few things I've learned since taking over the reins. The first of which is that in addition to the very tangible profit and loss statements you are clearly able to see, positive a few years back, but in recent years have been in the red, there are non-tangibles that are much harder to see. The fact that our village has this festival annually has had a profound impact on how Pleasantville is perceived in the region. Along with institutions such as the Burns, the farmer's market and Arc Stages, the PMF is one of the crown jewels that helped make the village a cultural and artistic beacon. These not only add to the prestige of the community, but they also bring in business and add to real estate values. For many residents, they are also sources of Pleasantville pride. The other important thing I've learned is that whatever changes are made to the format and/or mission of the festival, which may or may not increase attendance, at the end of the day, the weather will always be the driving force. We've had a great run of good weather through the first 16 years of the festival, the last two featuring ominous forecasts. And no matter what we do, who the musical acts are, or what time we start and finish, people generally don't like to spend money to sit out in the elements. Please remember, we've had two bad Saturdays out of 18. While there are no guarantees, I believe the numbers remain in our favor. This also means, however, that we need to accept the risks. And under the directorship of Doug Panero, the festival will do its best to mitigate them. I and many others believe it's worth it. Thank you for your consideration and go Giants, Ren and Yankees.
I usually agree with Bruce and I agree with him on everything here except his endorsement of the Giants because I'm a Cowboy fan.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
How did you make it to New York?
We knew a schism would be uncovered.
By the way, behind me, we have a bunch of staff. Thank you for showing up and so. By the way, behind me, we have a bunch of staff. Thank you for showing up and so I would call them festival dignitaries.
Thank you.
So for those of you who don't know, many of these people are the people that have made this thing happen. And that's not just day of, that's honestly twelve months a year. So thank you for being here. All right, so the the core story obviously is we had tough weather. We have new competition. Our neighbors in Sleepy Hollow have re-upped that are gonna do their festival again five weeks before us. Which is nervous making, to say the least.
Why is that nervous making?
Two festivals several miles away, five weeks apart.
Five weeks apart?
Yes.
Like, is that a known problem that festivals have? Like, if people hear music one month, they won't hear it the next month?
Just a.
I think there are lots of people that wouldn't go to two festivals in a space of five weeks.
Okay.
All right, so Doug, far following our conversation last week, you offered a bunch of suggestions. You want to just go over those?
Yeah, so more than suggestions, there there were things to lay out, you know, I I work for you, so I need your feedback. But these are the kind of things you might want to consider. The talent budget, we were thinking, those of you who haven't been there on the main stage, it's. Big headliner, then two, not so big, three, kind of big, and then four is. You know, whatever we can do, sort of a national act. The thing of maybe cutting that back, that would save us a significant amount of money. And then chopping one off each of the other venues, the party stage and the chill tent. Save us a little money there, press the day a little bit, save on hourly things that we all know about. That was one. Two is the item number two on there is related to that in terms of what the day would look like. And then ticket and, you know, other pricing. I know we have. A wide range of views on what we should do about ticket pricing. I don't think two thousand twenty-five is the year. Or even a small increase, much less, you know, a twenty percent or twenty-five percent. Paul is not here tonight, but. He expressed last night that people really thought about it, the value they're getting for the money would be around. A hundred, a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty dollars in today's market. If you were to go anywhere for a single show. At any venue, even in Westchester, Connecticut, down in the city, you know, it's it's underpriced. They're getting a lot of value for that. But I think two thousand twenty-five, which is a show me year, I think. You're gonna say to me, I don't think we we want to try to chase people away. And raise an uproar by changing, by increasing prices. I'm not gonna say that. All right, I I don't want to do that. I would recommend that we not do that. We talked last time about the village resident discount. I think that's marvelous. Let's do that. Spoke to Alyssa about it earlier today, and that would be a way to. Really emphasize the the hyper local community nature of this, get people on board with that. Have have them feel welcome there by offering a discount. We'll we'll figure out the logistics of that. And then we talked about the VIP experience, which could be anywhere from. Creating a segregated spot, maybe as we talk about in here, by liberating beer sales and consumption, letting Captain Lawrence. Have the run of the place. Now we have an empty space, a portion of which. We can have a VIP area. But as Bruce and I discussed, that costs money. Like, what what are we really gonna offer them there in a physical space? You would need a tent, maybe an air conditioned bathroom, services, staff. And now the more we're into it financially, what kind of return are we gonna get on that? There are other options. By the way, I'd like to discuss in more detail when we have time, not during this session, where maybe there there's a variety of things where we can offer sort of a. VIP experience, but not one that people are accustomed to a huge concert where you get this luxury package of benefits. And some of those benefits are going to be dependent on whether the artists are are willing to give us a meet and greet, signing CDs, that kind of merch. And special, unique experience there. But, you know, the VIP experience, the the in in some form is something I think we should look into. And then the the music lineup, you know, the the founders had principles that Bruce has pretty much adhered to. And I think I agree, it's time to revisit some of those. And, you know, talk about tribute bands, talk about. Expanding the hyper local nature of it. We've done our best and that of the bands is hyper locals, local bands, some of them are from. Pleasantville, but I think we need to revisit that and and the mix of talent on the main stage as well.
So. One piece that you mentioned the context of the potential VIP area in the Beer Garden, that that this. The issue embedded in that, which may have nothing to do with the VIP experience, is whether. The world has passed us by with the idea we once had that alcohol ought to be confined to the Beer Garden.
It's not now.
So I mean, clearly, it isn't, but. It it we are still in a certain stance where. Yeah, but it's not, it said city, you you have plenty of violators. The question really is. Captain Lawrence has in the past wanted to sell in multiple places.
Right.
And wanted to avoid the limitations that we have had. Is it time to do that? You know, part of the idea behind that was A to control underage drinking and B to avoid turning it into what feels like a kind of alcohol doused event. Related but unrelated, one of my favorite moments is the woman that grabs me and says, I just love this festival. I can stand right up by the stage and no one throws up on my legs.
I I think it's personally, I think it's overdue. I think we need to liberate them from that area. And we have responsible community members, we have staff, we have security. We're doing it at the block party, you know, which.
Well, yeah, and honestly, tent city, I mean, it's just like a thinly covered veil of, you know.
It's happening already is what you're against our will, yeah. Would that also be the benefit to that is that Captain Lawrence will be committed more because they'll see the benefit of that.
Yeah, I mean, recognize what's going on in Captain in ten city in some cases right now is people. Purposely and willfully violating the rule that you cannot bring in your own alcohol. They're bringing it in anyway, so.
Yeah, that we had a similar experience during prohibition. I'm an I don't drink, like, I don't drink. Any alcohol and, you know, I think it's it's sort of pointless trying. I think we're losing revenue, losing control. And not very much in the modern era with the prohibition right now. My wish list, too, going forward, one of the innovations I like to explore is if. The Beer Garden is cut in half and we use, depending on what kind of returns we get on the VIP experience, if you want to do that. All of a sudden, I can move the party stage a little closer up front. Eliminating the sound bleed between the chill tent and the party stage. And I think I think there's a lot more we can do with the chill stage in terms of make that more appealing, add some more. Inexpensive headliners there without the concern that I I've had over the last two or three years that depending on what's going on. On each of those stages, which, by the way, the main stage, for those of you who haven't been here, main stage is off, party and chill are on. And they're very close and party can be very loud. And I think just another forty or fifty yards might be enough to solve that problem and then create something really special over in the.
So if we open, sorry, if we open the Beer Garden area, then would we use like a bracelet kind of approach to?
Yeah, the same way they they enter the the Beer Garden now and they have to be wrist banded.
Right, right, right.
Be able to buy beer anywhere on site.
I mean, the question about a VIP area is. Would the income warrant the expense, recognizing that the expense is. Fixed and in the event of bad weather. Or even further out on the board? And so part of that question, you have thoughts about what a VIP ticket could be?
I have a couple of that. Since I wasn't here five weeks ago.
Go ahead.
I I apologize, first of all, for any of you who are interested in this.
Two weeks ago.
Uh, two weeks ago, sorry, I travel excessively during weeks whenever our meetings do not occur on Monday nights. That's particularly difficult for me. Sorry, is this better? Okay. So I just want to say a couple of things and ask a couple of questions because I missed the last session and I very much apologize to my fellow board members for repeating ground that you may have already tread before. I'm a big supporter of this festival. I think that. Nobody, everybody comes to a town to live in usually because of the schools. But the reason you stay in a town, the reason you go to a town that you don't live in is usually because the arts, right? So that's what draws you and and it's very difficult when you start pulling apart threads. Of the different cultural elements that create a successful village. It's very to know, very hard to know which one you pull apart that will cause the whole tapestry to unravel. And so I think this is really important, but. And and having said that, I also recognize that. The financial risk that we've run in the last couple of years is probably unacceptably large. And that. It it can be any great idea. Over time, the world changes around the idea. And we may need to update the idea to meet the world where it is. And so what I'm very interested in is to see if we can. Through this process of ideation, which I think this is a really good. Take on things that could be done. We can financially model this so that in a year that we had this year or last year, where there is either the threat of rain or some actual rain. That we can sort of limit our losses to about half of what they were this year. And in good years, we can. Predictably have excess revenue of the same amount. So that even if we get up to sort of fifty percent of the time. There's bad weather in a in a future that has more bad weather, we're still sort of breaking even on a five year time horizon, right? But but what I did want to say is I think I I like your openness to looking at some different ideas. And, you know, I I sort of hope what you can do. As we move forward is to start to put these on an Excel sheet and sort of play with this because Peter could be absolutely right about the. VIP experience and maybe maybe it's too expensive and the actual return on investment is not there. But on the other hand, if. Maybe it's like better seats and a little merch and some some. Some safe parking or whatever, maybe that is low cost and. High income. And if you can model that out a little bit, then maybe you get to a place where where we can be a little better off. Yeah, and there was also an idea of kind of teasing it, not so much that you're getting this VIP experience that you're paying a a lot of money for, but. Contributing to the the festival. You're doing something a little extra and we're giving you something a little extra in return. Right. Rather than gambling on it, right, as we say, those those significant additional additional expenses to create some physical.
And you will recall, we had a GoFundMe years back, right? And and that generated some income and that included a ticket. But also a T-shirt that identified you as sort of a core supporter.
Yeah, I I like that kind of rebranding, for lack of a better word, of the idea. I mean. I think you're gonna find a little bit of disagreement amongst the board members about the VIP idea. Personally, I've always. Had reservations about the concept just because it doesn't doesn't feel very pleasantville to me, you know what I mean? I I feel like we're a more egalitarian type of community and the idea that you would have these kind of privileged seats. Rows me a little bit the wrong way. So, but like I said, not all of the board members are gonna agree with me on that. However, if there's a way to kind of. Sort of reoriented as supporters of the of the music festival or something like that, that. That may make more sense or that may be more, you know.
I will add, I I was speaking to a lot of local residents and. I know Paul's not here tonight and he's voiced this before, but actually, many of them were willing to pay more. These are families with a lot of young kids, so their experience is kind of twofold where they come during the day with young children. And then they come back at night. This is something that's been happening for several years.
They take the kids home and then they come back.
Yeah, it's like basically, it's like a double. Whammy of a day. You know, you're like, yes, let's do a family outing, put the kids down, walk back in, and then they have sort of this night for themselves. So I think it feels like it's two two events for them. So I think that's why they are willing to pay this larger price. Also, I think other people, some of the people I spoke to. Think that is sort of a lower price than they would pay for another festival. And even though we're competing with. Sleepy Hollow right now, five weeks before. I know that Paul and I share this, that I think some. Residents are willing to pay more. That's just.
Yeah, and so today, earlier today, I taught my graduate marketing class at NYU and we did promotions and pricing. And one of the things I want you to think about is sequential skimming, which is. I. If I have something of value, it may be of different value at a different time period, right? So perhaps you keep the early bird pricing exactly how it is today. But you create a much bigger gap between the early bird pricing and the next two levels, you know, of. You know, sixteen weeks out and then day of, and maybe day of is like seventy-five percent more, something that. Makes you say, I'm only gonna truly buy tickets the day of if I really don't know if I'm gonna be in town until then or if the weather is such an overwhelming issue. And you can, you can, we can model that out. You could do that in a couple of specific venues early to see what the reaction is and whether the. You know, you can do an A B test basically on the pricing online to see what is gonna work with your audience.
But I'm inclined to think that Doug is right that this isn't the year for the.
I mean, I could set a point for that. I just know that when I spoke with. You know, some residents, you know, about sixty of them, just in a poll to this weekend, past weekend was very busy, so I tried to pull as many people as possible. And I think a lot of them voiced that opinion. They also voiced the opinion about the music line of, sorry, being more local. So one, a couple of suggestions were including. Now, this might go outside of the original sort of idea around the festival, but was including acts where a lot of children from Pleasantville. Could be highlighted on a stage and that their parents might come to see them. This was sort of a a push to include Pleasantville residents to come so that we could also enjoy the benefits of pain.
Yeah, I think Bruce experimented with that or pursued that and we have that quality. We have to have. Some something to put up.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, he, some of the mentions were, and this is not. Strictly music, but it's also the dance school and the music school that are in town. I mean, there's two dance schools, but. They, these are performances that people put on all the time. There are, it's not. It's gonna be a different level, but I think a small fraction of that will. You know, it highlights a lot of what we're trying to do.
You're saying like, take the chill trend chill tent and during one day part for like the first three hours, turn it into the children.
Not 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 full three hours, no.
Well, I'm just saying, like, you create a day part and you say during one portion of the day. Not the main stage, but some like the the covered chill town, which you can't really hear from outside of it anyway, becomes.
Could be a fifteen minutes long. I I mean, under fifteen minutes. I I just think that some silo of that would increase some revenue and people coming to see it. I think there's.
I want to push, I'm sorry, I want to push a little bit and I'm being more aggressive just because I didn't get to talk the the last time. I want to push a little bit on the pricing again because, again, we're thinking of this as. One or the other. It doesn't have to be that. You could reduce the price by ten dollars and say we're doing a price cut or early bird. And and nobody can complain then that the price is going up because they had access to a lower price. And then you could increase it by forty dollars or thirty dollars for the next round. Like, those are the kinds of games that we play with pricing to give everybody what they want. Some people want flexibility. Some people want the ability to save money. It's gonna depend on you, what's the most important thing to them. Can I can I suggest since there there's time pressure, hopefully, you're gonna approve the festival this year. To get the go ahead because we're running behind schedule in terms of all the things that have to happen. And between now and the vote is taking taken, I I would hope we don't have to wait for a regular scheduled meeting. I spoke to Alyssa about that. Maybe my wish list would be I meet with each of you either two at a time, one at a time, like this week. And we have a special, I don't know, governance here, have a special meeting sometime prior to two weeks from now. If that's possible.
I mean, I think you're good. I think you're good. I mean, I think we're gonna.
Yeah.
Right, like, I mean, if that's your main concern is whether you're gonna get the green light or not, I'm sure we'd be happy to meet with you individually as well, but I think you're good. With the green light. I mean, la- last time, I'm speaking for myself anyway, you can ask these guys. But, you know, last time, we expressed a number of concerns and we brainstormed a number of ideas and I think there definitely is a concern. Not just on the board, but sort of community wise about. It becoming a venture that loses money on a regular basis, right? And so. My impression anyways that you're making a really good effort to address those issues and obviously, it's not like we. Effort to address those issues and obviously it's not like we wave a magic wand and we know exactly, you know, the best way to do this, right? But. Um, but it's a process of experimentation and so you're finding ways to cut back on some of the costs and maybe also generate some more income. I feel like that's the kind of thing that we were looking for and so um.
I it's, you know, first of all, I would, I would vote to move forward tonight, right? But. Um, I would also be happy to sit down with you and like open a Excel spreadsheet and look at like how you can. Know what impact all these various things are gonna have, if you haven't already done it. You know, how you can sort of look at, you know, what the financial impact of different things could and present it, be able to present it in the future in the board as we're trying to figure out. What exactly this becomes once you have your green light.
Uh, you sound like the expert with the Excel spreadsheet, so I'll sit down with you. And you could put it in a spreadsheet.
Wait, let me also say.
So many years to free myself from Excel. Among the various, very many variables we confront is whether we can secure the same level of outside sponsorship. Fingers crossed, no guarantees, so that's another piece, so.
The other thing too, just to uh wrap that little piece up, I you know, I I consider myself a fiduciary. The guardian of the series, right, of this festival. I'm an attorney by day, you know that I I mentioned that before. I spend all day. Protecting clients and I bring that to the business that I do here and um. I only have taxpayer interest and your interest and the community's interests at heart. Uh, the other thing is, you may not know this, I'll try not to choke up saying this. But this is like the pinnacle of what I've wanted to do in my life as a, you know, music lover and. Somehow I crossed over into producing concerts. I don't know how that happened. That was twelve or thirteen years ago. I wrecked my home doing some of the house concerts and on and on and on. But I'm so passionate about this festival and creating something here, innovating. Uh, I'm like a hundred percent in. This is, this is what I wanna do and like I can't wait to get started and. You know, I hope you give me that chance to show you.
We 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 do not have much time at all, but if there's somebody out there that really wanted to say something, pipe on.
Charity Moshbit.
Hi, I'm Meredith, hail Forty-Ninth Academy Street. And we actually went to the Sleepy Hollow Music Festival. I've got anybody else on. I was saying about that, we were actually excited for there to be two festivals and it was never like a deterrent, like we wouldn't wanna go to this one. Because in the other one, that was very different. It's much smaller. They only have two. Stages and um the second stage is on vocal, maybe even really second stage. They do have alcohol that you can drink through your seats though and. It did not detract from the feeling of it being of a family-friendly, low-key event, but. They may unintentionally slow down the consumption of alcohol because they will disorganize the lines. On the second stage in Bridgeport, South Festivals.
You guys are serious. You're like Corey.
And um, yeah. And it it was really bad weather for that one. They had bigger acts. They had Noah Khan and Louis. But everyone stood outside in their ponchos for the entire, I mean, it was just like, wow, just the whole field was people in ponchos. It was raining. The whole day. Um, so you have a good enough act, I think that people will stand outside and, you know, less than ideal weather. So it comes down to the acts.
And several people have mentioned that as well, people that that I've spoken to about the acts. I mean, just. They're like, we could just do the big act to pull it in. I said, there's so many logistics that go into it and. I I just, I'm fully in support of this. Every single person that I've spoken to is like, if you take this thing away, I swear to God, like, they they just not. I I really don't think they're like, if you do anything with the music festival in the farmer's market, I swear. And I was like. You know, I was like, I don't think you're the only one that feels that, but very passionate and this, I. I hope that we can find the right way to move forward in and really support it, you know, financially and just. Marketing was all of it.
I'm sure Paul said this and it's reflected in your documents, so I apologize if it's duplicative, but like I really feel like. Part of the issue has been we're trying to sort of fight in a weight class that we're not in any longer. Um, and. When I look at the last two festivals, which I love both of them. But I think the the most special moments were the the Allman Band span, the second generation of the Allman Brothers. And then the the Whalers sort of continuation band. And it was because it was a combination of knowing the music and having some authenticity both at the same time. And while the headliners in both years were were great and 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 they're. They're they're sort of like gifted in terms of their ability to communicate with an audience clearly, right? But I think just the the communal feeling you get when you can sing along. And when everybody sort of shares that and then, you know, being of a certain age, when you share that sort of. Memory of I was here in my life, I was here in my life when these things happened. Like, if we're playing more in that arena and we lose like the the quote-unquote big headliner, I don't. I don't think it's necessarily terrible for this kind of a festival.
Uh, I'm on board with that. Um, you know, I I used to be in the other camp, but. Tribute band, particularly this year, and I'm thinking about Phil Lesh and Grateful Dead and. Sing along.
Right.
Those tunes, right? And and then there are, there are bands that uh. I I wouldn't, I'm sorry, insult them by calling them cover bands. They're reinventing these songs that we know.
Right.
Uh, you know, one is Teddy Swims. You know, we don't talk about jazz singers being cover bands when they're playing the American Songbook, do we? So you find the right talent playing music that we know, I agree. I was one of those peoples, uh one of those people standing up front.
Yeah.
Singing to the Whalers, so I know what you mean.
Alright, so I think i- i- it's clear we're gonna do this. And I think your idea of talking to each person individually and really sort of kicking around all the ideas that it. That are out there is is good. Let's bring that to some clarity. I think one. Really useful thing is the idea of tweaking the timing. Uh, to make a little bit of a shorter day that.
Oh, I'm gonna say, can I, can I add to that? Bruce and I have been going back and forth because Bruce is always, he's in, my wife is in this year, he's. I was thinking, you know, Broadway just cut back uh starting times because I don't know how we calculate this and. What the relationship is, but post-COVID, it sounds like people wanna be home earlier. And I I put two options in there for a reason, which is to end at nine or end at eight-thirty. Do I have any takers thoughts on?
I'm a little bit divided myself about it because like I was saying before, people uh that I have spoken to that have sort of this uh. Young kids, they put them down and they come back. And so that would give them a little bit more time to kind of come back and have sort of this night out. Um, but at the same time, I I see that the benefits of having it end earlier and maybe not as many. Hours that we serve are are billable.
But there are two options he's giving there too.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean, music ending at. I mean, the latest is nine-thirty.
One was shifting the time, compressing it because we we stripped it of a band, I don't know, three across the board. And then the other is, do we really need an hour between doors opening and?
Do you have the emails of the people who went the last couple of years?
Pardon me?
Do you have the email addresses of people who went the last couple of years?
Yeah.
This is a great survey monkey for them.
Oh, yeah. Something we can talk about.
It seems to me a half an hour gates open to first music is is fine. I mean, my obs- I I mean, as we have all seen, and it happens every year, that first hour or two is pretty thin.
Yeah.
Always is, so. Alright, I'm gonna leave you with one last thought, and that is that at Sleepy Hollow, Anthony Giacchio is the village administrator and his band played. And so I'm thinking, we need Eric to.
Only if the chief performed that.
It'll be Eric and the Eric's.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, Doug, thank you. And hey, not only thank you all. You know, the this core group is, if if any community has ever had a better core group, I would be surprised, so I just thank you as always.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome to stay. Chief Gressner is making his quarterly report.
I will tell you one thing about that Sleepy Hollow, one's a hundred dollars a ticket, more than ours. And as much as I liked your idea. The second stage was dictated or was dedicated towards sort of family stuff. Nobody was there. It was, it was sad and I even went over there to take pictures and felt like, I don't, I don't even wanna be here because. They're like looking at me saying, please stay, sad eyes. And there's little kids and whatever, and it's like, I don't know. So anyway.
Alright.
Take care, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Alright. It is eight P M. We're right on time, even though we just skipped over a couple of items in our work session that we will have to go back to. Uh, good evening all. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting uh for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, October twenty-eight. Uh, our next uh board meeting is two weeks and a day from now, Tuesday, November twelve. Uh, work session at seven, regular session at eight, but we are at the Clinton Street Center. We have to switch our schedule because Monday, the eleventh, is Veterans Day. Uh, which uh reminds me to uh encourage all of you to join us for our annual Veterans Day ceremony. Which takes place down at the gazebo in Memorial Plaza at eleven A M. On the eleventh of November. So always uh uh a meaningful event. Uh, and participation by the Fentra Nickel American Legion Post, but also singers from Pleasantville High School and uh. Uh Pleasantville's uh Boy Scout troop as well. So that's Memorial Plaza, eleven A M on November eleven. We just finished a work session on two different subjects, one of which was uh the uh soon-to-be-realized. Effort to create a uh one or more downtown murals, working with our Public Art Committee. Thank you to Mary Jane Schimsky. For having uh our assemblyman, for having um. Uh, arranged a grant of thirty-five thousand dollars to be. Provided for the Village of Pleasantville and to be administered by uh the Westchester Arts Council. So thank you, Westchester Arts. And Mary Jane Schimsky. So you'll be hearing more about that uh soon, likely identifying some locations and then having a request proposal. From various artists for uh what might uh be done. Couple of other things I just wanted to touch on. As uh as you can see, uh work is rocking and rolling finally. Both on the civic space in Memorial Plaza and the completion of the Mandeville Road Pedestrian Project. Uh, any number of roadblocks have been thrown in our way, but ultimately, I think have now mostly been overcome. Took some hurdle jumping, uh and it uh took Eric Morrissey uh being on the phone and being on the field and. Uh feeding his life to this for a while. I suggested he should scratch his name into the sidewalk. I don't think he did.
You want it underneath where the new footing is, you know, where they, when they discover twenty years from. It's not really quite holding the thing up. They'll see your name right there.
So Eric, why don't you just give a quick summary of what it looks like going forward through snow flying here?
Sure. Uh, so right now, uh they are working on the Mass Arm Signal Foundation. Um, uh, they will do the wiring this week for that.
And that is the new signal that replaces the duplicative light.
That's correct.
Uh, at at Wheeler and Mandeville.
Yeah.
That's going on the opposite side, right?
It's it's going on the um Mandeville Road parking lot side.
Right, right, right. It's gonna be like a, yeah.
It's essentially that string of lights is just pushing back.
Right.
To bring it into compliance. Um, the the contractors over near Valveen right now doing uh drainage work there. Uh, they'll hop back over in front of Dunkin' Donuts and replace uh drainage structure in front of there as well. Uh, the traffic signal contractor will do some trench work and pedestrian signal upgrades on Washington Avenue. Up all the corners there, and the aim is to repave the corridor by mid-November. Um, that repaving will have to happen during the day because nighttime temperatures are so low. And the idea there is we'll have one lane of traffic operating probably northbound through the day, detouring everyone else. Uh, to Bedford Road. It's gonna be about two to three days of knowing the paving there and then that's it.
So when you say the signal updates on Washington Avenue, are those the signals on, when you're on Washington? Intersecting with Mandeville, those signals?
Uh, and and crossing Washington.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a couple of new ones that will be put in and the old ones decommissioned.
And will that address the issues with the lag that has been brought up?
Oh, the the late red, um, and so. Um, what we're, what we're gonna do is at the conclusion of the project, we're gonna have our traffic engineers.
Right.
Look at the timing.
Okay.
And come up with an updated timing plan that they'll submit to D O T. Obviously, it's their traffic signals, but we can suggest. That they will will have done the work for them and we can suggest what tweaks to make to the timing.
Right.
Um, so we did a timing plan before the project commenced in two thousand nineteen. We provided those to the D O T. I'm not sure if they may or may not have updated them, but. It it's also a good idea to do it at the conclusion of the project once.
Because we all have like, isn't the plan that we're recommending it not be like an all walk? Whatever they call it.
Oh, that was over here on Bedford Road.
No, I know that's true in Bedford Road. I'm saying for for Mandeville, is it gonna be the same thing?
I don't get, no, we get to decide that.
Well, I know, but we're recommending, right?
Yeah, I mean, and and just unrelated to the Mandeville project, as you know, we've we've finally gotten these updates on Bedford and. Uh, just this week it was finalized and preliminarily, or last week, preliminarily, it seems quite a bit better. That's been my observation. Anybody else?
Yeah, Wheeler Avenue, there's less.
Yeah, I I looked this weekend, so uh obviously we'll keep an eye on it, but I think there's been some significant improvement. Any sense of that, chief?
Uh, we haven't seen anything specific, but I think just panic totally.
Yeah, alright, so then Eric, uh I also wanna point out, folks have said, oh my god, you know, the. Sidewalk is is so wide over the bridge. Now the lanes are so narrow, especially that the the right-hand lane. That isn't the final striping conditions.
That's correct. After the paving is done, the final uh striping will occur and there'll be two lanes at the intersection.
Two proper width lanes. And then the lane going in the other direction on the bridge will be somewhat narrower. Uh, it it has always been comically wide. There's plenty of room to make that narrower.
That's right. So I've been trying to convince people on Facebook on this with limited success.
So um. Uh, and to that. Although the dry weather has caused other problems, the one thing it has helped is our construction projects, so that's been great. The pool. Uh, project, if anyone has driven by on Lake Street, is rocking and rolling. Are we now, we're waiting for Department of Health approval of piping?
Uh, we we got that. We got the K O H permit, um, so the excavation work is almost done. Um, and then the fun part with the pool begins, so everything is tracking to schedule.
So we're on schedule now?
We are on schedule.
Okay.
And it's quite, quite impressive, so.
Yeah, it's a lot of.
Awful lot of work. Awful lot of work is uh going on. So um. Uh amid that, obviously, the extremely dry weather has caused various other problems, uh especially we've had trouble down at Parkway Field. Uh, which became very dry and has uh produced dusty conditions there. Lots of commentary about that in the last several days. I just wanna make clear first off that it's an irrigated field and we do irrigate it. We're currently irrigating it twice a day. Uh, that field looked pretty darn great in in August, but it gets beat up because no fewer than six different football teams are playing on it. Uh, but we're talking to everybody uh and are open to talking to everybody about any way we can. Uh, improve the maintenance of that turf and continue to do so. Uh, but um. A lot of chatter going on, not all of it, uh, you know, completely accurate or or completely fair. I think the bottom line is. Uh, we and the school district and I think everybody in the sports community, I want that field to be as good as it can be and we are. Uh, on board to try to achieve that. A couple of other quick announcements, a shout out to the entire community uh and to. Uh, Mike and Mindy, Mario, everybody at the at the rec department. Uh, we have new staff in the rec department. Uh, and uh all of that devolved into a great ragamuffin parade which took place yesterday. Yemi was there with uh uh her grude in tow.
Such a large grude.
Well, isn't there, my daughter was.
Yeah.
It was such a nice man.
Uh, led, the parade was led by Billy Flukes in the Billy Flukes Mobile. I don't know if you've seen it, the six-seater golf cart. Uh, and uh it was uh very uh. Uh, impressively decorated for Halloween with a.
That was the first time, right?
Huge spider lurking over the top, so thank you to Billy Flukes. Thank you to. Mister Richasey and the Pleasantville Middle School Band, uh always the leader of the parade. Um, thanks to the police department for all the work they do to make it possible for ghosts, goblins and ghouls and Harry Potters to make their way safely down uh Memorial Plaza. Um, and thanks to the P B A for having the booth uh down uh at the plaza as well. So a, a very good day. As mentioned, mark your schedules, uh the Veterans Day Ceremony, Monday, the eleventh of November, eleven A M. Uh, Saturday, December seventh is our lighting ceremony. It's been switched from its usual weeknight to a Saturday night. Uh, and are hopeful that that will uh not only be easier for folks, don't have to get the kids to to bed and to school tomorrow, but also be nice synergy with uh the holiday season uh downtown. Um, any other announcements to make? Is there any comment from any member of the public, either in the room or on Zoom? If you're on Zoom and wish to say something, raise your hand in the chat. There being none. Um, we will go to the first event on our schedule, which is the quarterly presentation from Police Chief Eric Gretzner. Welcome, sir. I have your presentation. You tell me when you're ready.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I would like to just share that, you know, with all this progress that we've made on the Mandeville Road project, Bedford Road and the pool. Eric and I were just talking earlier today about what's next, like what's the next big project that he's ready to take on? So whenever you're ready, just. Something else.
I think it was already mentioned, Eric and the Eric's. A band. A band for the music festival.
And I, and I, I'm not saying this because she's here, but obviously when Eric, and you all know this, but obviously when Eric is called away to Mandeville Road or someplace else, it is Alyssa, to whom usually most of the work falls and uh obviously the two of them together are a part of the team and we are very lucky to have both of them. So just want to start with that.
I echo that. I think all of us do. Uh, Alyssa is rocking and rolling on our uh web services and she's got us on a new platform for uh documents and agendas and uh
PowerPoint presentations.
She is a force to be reckoned with i- in the very best of all possible ways.
So without further, further ado, you can start whenever you want to bring that up. You're ready to go.
Okay.
Great. Uh, so again, basically just um listing out some of the activities, some of the general activities that we do on a quarterly basis, that we do on a daily basis, shows a wide variety of different calls that we may go on. Next. Um. Hold on.
Let's touch, can I assess what's the blue number and the black number?
The blue no, oh, that's a great question. The blue number is uh the, for the current quarter, the black number is comparative to the previous quarter.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, obviously, especially uh in the beginning of, uh you know, through the summer and now as the school year starts, a lot of this presentation, excuse me, is going to be focused on the beginning of the um school year and a lot of the different things that we've done as, as the kids have come back to school and everybody's come back from vacation. Um, so as you know, we talked, as you all talked about at the beginning of the meeting, as far as all the different changes and all of the different concerns around the villages regards to traffic and parking and pedestrians and things like that, we have greatly increased our regular um uh traffic posts that we conduct throughout the village. Obviously, many of them are focused around the schools, but also folks um raise concerns about different neighborhoods, different streets where they see um areas of concern and areas for improvement. We encourage people to continue to communicate with us. The easiest thing is usually by email. Uh, what will, our, our policy is usually we'll get an email in regards to a certain area. We will assess the area and try to be out there on random days at random times uh for a couple of weeks at least, and then we put it into a recurring list um where we potentially um still go back out there. We don't just target one area and then completely move away from it, but there are, as, as so many different requests are coming in for us to be on different posts in different locations, it's impossible for us to stay on one post uh continually, but we do try to come back. Uh, you know, parking regulations especially are particularly tricky because um behavior takes a long time to change. And so it is difficult to keep coming back, but we encourage people. Uh, if you do see a violation, whether you've notified us an email previously or not, just to go ahead, give us a call. Many times, especially around the schools, when people only park there temporarily, they may be gone by the time we get there, but not all of them. And so if we get the opportunity to interact with someone who is parking for their convenience at the expense of others, we usually hope to change some behavior through uh if not uh some enforcement activity, at least a little conversation. Next, please. Uh, so a couple of different um community policing opportunities and some different activities that we participated in uh this, in these last few months. On August fifth, we were introduced, uh invited down to Select Human Services on Marvel Avenue to participate with their clients in an ice cream social. Some pictures were taken and some fun was had for sure. So you can just, next one. So that's our, our group photo, uh a number of the officers. We, we tend to be in the back and those are the, the clients from Select Human Services. If you'd next, please. Officer Gomartyn, I'm pretty sure he lost that game of Connect Four. Next.
Yeah, he's not, he's not looking very strategic.
Uh, Officer Charles. And in the background, you can see, well, you'll see a closer shot of that in just a second, but next. So Lieutenant Wallman and that Sergeant Zane, Lieutenant Wallman playing a game of headbands. It's a fun game.
Nice.
And next, oh, yes, that was it. Um, and then obviously, like, like I discussed, the idea that the beginning of school represents new opportunities for us to A, begin our interaction with the schools that we usually do and then find new ways to interact with the kids. So next, please. Uh, we were, have been at all the varsity football games, obviously a major um a major community event throughout the year. Uh, and then on uh September twentieth, the, the school district, the uh parents booster club requested a first responder appreciation night. So all of the police departments that uh represent or have Pleasantville as their jurisdiction. So uh the school district is their jurisdiction. So it was us, it was Mount Pleasant, but it was also D E P, Department of Environment and Conservation, the county police, state police. Uh, I apologize if I'm, if I missed anyone, along with the fire department who turned out in, in great numbers as usual and uh the volunteer ambulance corps. Uh, we were all honored. It was an honor to, to be there. Uh, if you were there for the ceremony, it was, was really, really well done. Uh, the game did not, um, so far I have not lost a coin toss that I've been there for, but this time was the first time we actually didn't win the game, but we played a great game against R I. Uh, so it was, it was just a great night, very enjoyable night for all of us to be out there. Next, please. All right, getting into our staffing and overtime, we saw a little increase in our overtime numbers. Uh, some of that is as a result of the a large number of vacations that come through the summertime, obviously. We also had um a little bit of issues with um some personnel things, but uh we expect that these numbers should, uh although the holiday season coming up is also a large vacation uh time, uh we do expect that we should see these numbers return uh for a number of reasons. If you want to go to the next, uh so there, just a little bit of a graphic representation as our numbers trended up a little bit uh from quarter two of this year. Um, but many of them still remain lower than quarter three of last year. And then next. Uh, and then our special events and police operations. Again, our overtime is broken down, just to kind of recap, I know many of you have heard this uh probably more than once, but our overtime is sometimes broken down into the patrol aspect, the times that we need a certain number of people to handle a certain number of shifts, and then on top of that, we have special events or arrests or things that pop up that require us to um either keep people on or bring people in for extra duty. Um, and so we sort of try to manage both of those things um to the best of our ability. Our numbers go up and down, but usually, like I said, um we, we are expecting in the next few weeks or months to add another officer, to replace an officer who's come off the rolls. Uh, and so we should, should knocking on wood, and I'm anticipating that there's always something unknown around the corner, but we should expect to have a little bit of an increase in our manpower and um and get back to our staffing levels. I believe that might be actually the next slide. Yep. So um we'll have, uh we had one retirement. We're in the process now of going through the process of uh replacing that officer. So we should see a, a net plus one as far as officers actually on patrol and taking shifts, which is very helpful for all of us. Uh, in addition, we welcomed a new parking enforcement officer. Uh, James Lobato has been uh out on the streets. You've probably seen him out and about. Uh, this is a great addition for us because we don't just, those two officers now, um they don't just do enforcement. They also obviously have responsibilities as far as meter collection and things like that, but we also use them when we need crossing guards. Uh, and so they really do fill in a number of valuable roles for us. So uh it's a great, so it's a wonderful opportunity to have uh our full staffing back of parking enforcement and community service workers. Next. Uh, our training, we had Officer Charles who attended. Uh, he is a taser instructor. Uh, my understanding is that as a taser instructor, you have to get tased again. So um kudos to him for getting through the training, but not, not the most fun school you sign up for. Um, and additionally, uh there were a few events that happened uh in September where uh in my role as the chief, or the, excuse me, the president of the Western County Chiefs Association, I had the opportunity to participate in. Next, uh on September eleventh, I was part of the Westchester County nine eleven uh ceremony, representing law enforcement, if you go to the next picture. Um, so it was a beautiful day and it was a wonderful ceremony, uh a number of speakers, um you know, really sort of uh bringing everybody back. A lot of people, obviously, in attendance who have been personally affected by nine eleven. Um, and it was really a, a moving and touching tribute uh to those people who we lost and to the spirit uh as for all those who, who continue to carry on uh in the years since. So uh next. In addition, on September twelfth, um I spoke to the Westchester Jewish Council. They had a hot, every year they have a high holiday security briefing. Um, obviously, the events of the last year have um completely changed. Uh, you know, the, in many ways, everything has changed. In many ways, everything has stayed the same. Uh, and so it's, it's been a wonderful partnership. Um, many chiefs and uh officers from different agencies all throughout Westchester were in attendance. Many um members of different synagogues or Jewish um service organizations were in attendance and it was great to be able to obviously uh interface, but also to give people strength and hope as, as they came into the high holidays. Obviously, everybody was on high alert this year. Um, things went very well, especially here in Pleasantville, but overall in general. Uh, but that obviously stems from the communication and the cooperation of everyone involved. Next. All right, I just want to touch on a couple um projects of note. They actually go in order from um least good news to most good news. So we'll start off with this. Our records management system, as you recall, uh we are part of a cohort of uh departments that is participating with Westchester County as an I T program to bring out a new records management system. Every time we go on a call or deal with a person or do anything at all, it goes into our records management system. The current system we are using is old. It is really no longer supported. The company's been bought out. Uh, the reason that this project started was because a number of departments were all on that same system and we all recognized we needed to go to something else. So we saw this as an opportunity to share some services and to participate together, share some information. Uh, the onboarding has been bumpy at best, but we still have uh hope that the go-live date for this project will be sometime uh June of next year. So once that happens, we will need to train all the officers. Again, this is, this is our bread and butter. This is what we use every single day, multiple times every day. So there will be um training that will have to go along with this. There will be a neat learning curve. The system that we've used has been up to the task to this point, but many of the systems that have been developed in the time from when it was developed look a lot different. So we expect a pretty steep learning curve, but we are hopeful and confident that as we move forward, we should be able to incorporate that.
The project bumpy transition related to the translation from one to the old, old to the new or?
It's, it's, most of it has been the fact that, so I was part of the committee uh of chiefs in Westchester that selected this particular corporation that we're going with over three or four others um to, to be awarded the contract. And when we started the process, it did a lot of things. It does a lot of things. The problem is it does them differently than we're used to. So you have twelve or fourteen people in a room who are used to the same system and then they say, okay, you have to do it this way now. And we say, well, can you change it? And they say, well, it's really a training issue. And so they've had a couple of, it's a, it's a large corporation that's had a couple corporate issues that have come up in other places. So they caused things to fix what was going on there. So we didn't have the same issues. So it's sort of been the corporate rollout has really been more of the issue than it has been, um, you know, mixed messages or a lack of understanding of. Uh, so we are still hopeful and again, a new records management system is quite pricey. And so, you know, my thanks to Lieutenant Gomartyn. He spends a great amount of time working with uh the other partners in Westchester County. And if we go through with this, we will have saved, we will modernize our processes at a great savings to the village. So uh, next. Our radio communications project.
The news only gets better.
It only gets better. Uh, our radio communications project. Uh, so as you recall, we purchased new radios, went on the M T A system during, doing an assessment of the area, the M T A decided that a uh new antenna up at the water tower site was uh appropriate. And so they installed it. We are currently a little bit delayed because uh there's a bit of a delay getting content to bring the power up there. There were some questions as to exactly how much power they needed. And so once the decision was made that they were going to bring in more, they had to bring in a transformer or install a transformer. And obviously, these things are delays. Our radio system is exceptional. It works on two different bands. It will either work on the ta, off the tower as a typical radio system does, or we have the ability currently to go off of um L T E. So I have been in, I was outside of Albany going up for a conference and listening clearly to radio traffic here in, in Brewster. Obviously, the interoperability, um uh the, of the ability to inter, to communicate with other agencies is greatly enhanced as we sort of come onto this shared system. So uh a little bit of a delay to going towards the next step, which would be the antenna. We are anticipating, although we're not completely sure, but we are anticipating that once that antenna goes live, those radios will be strong enough, the strength of a radio potentially gets you more penetration into big buildings that are made of concrete and steel. Uh, so we're looking forward to seeing when that antenna goes live, exactly what the uh improvement is on our radio reception, especially in some of the difficult spots throughout the village. Next. Okay, so our fleet. Uh, as you recall, we um we ordered two Mach E Mustang fully electric vehicles.
Sounds like seven years ago, right?
It feels like it, sure. Um, just, uh, I am scheduled, myself and Lieutenant Wallman are scheduled to go down to our vendor tomorrow morning, ten A M. to make the final decisions on where certain things need to be installed and where they need to go based on a number of different factors. But we are expecting to take delivery of these vehicles within weeks.
That's great.
I- i- in, in, in the immediate future. So we are, we are as hopeful about taking delivery of those vehicles as we've ever been.
Great.
And lastly, uh, two things that.
As an aside, um as you likely know, uh ours department and the water department are just in love with their lightning pickup trucks and have commented to me that the cops have been looking.
Uh, it would not be the, we would not be the first municipality to put pickup trucks into the fleet. So uh definitely a conversation worth having.
I was thinking more about the, the electric powertrain. Ah, you know, I didn't mean to open the door to your.
Also did the golf quest.
Yeah, yeah. Have you looked at the Billy Flukes Golf Park? Um, so lastly, one of our goals for this year was uh increased community outreach, especially as it comes to uh opioid concerns. We have partnered with Hope Not Handcuffs for a number of years. Hope Not Handcuffs is a pre-arrest diversion. It has a number of different um facets to it, but it is mostly a pre-arrest diversion. We have just recently, this is a little bit after the, the time period, but I didn't want, I wanted to announce this to the public. We have um partnered with a couple of different agencies, Westchester Opt-In, it's a partnership with the Westchester County District Attorney's Office. That uh arranges for a post-arrest diversion outside of the criminal justice system. Obviously, it's a, it's, it's um, you have to meet the criteria. Those criteria are um are pretty strict, but the idea is to have as, as much open uh as a catchall. But basically, it's were we to arrest somebody who seems to be co, uh committing crimes due to their opioid addiction, the district attorney's office has uh agreed to partner with us to process by which um people have to basically participate in their own recovery. If they do that and get through a couple of milestones, then the case is dismissed. Um, but if obviously they fall off, then potentially the opportunity for um for reintroduction of those criminal charges is there. It is not a get it, get out of jail free card, but we believe it is recognition of the fact that many crimes that are committed by people who are suffering from opioid use disorder uh is really a matter of. Many crimes that are committed by people who are suffering from opioid use disorder, uh, is really a manifestation of their disease and not necessarily of. Criminal intent, so we are proud to partner with that, uh, with, with the district attorney on that. And leave behind the lock zone is something that I have been, uh, pursuing for some time, uh, over the last few months, it's really, the, the state and the county have really made it. Easier to participate in this program, and it is exactly what it sounds like, we have a batch of naloxone opioid recovery kits downstairs. If anyone wants one, they can simply come in or ask an officer for a kit and we will arrange to get them one, there's a five-minute training, um. That goes along with it, that at this point now, uh, I'm really the only person who's trained in it, but we're going to be training the officer so that this can happen anytime. Uh, but it is a very simple and straightforward process of simply, the, the naloxone is now delivered as a nasal spray, you simply take the lid off, put it up somebody's nose. And go, um.
That's for refrigerated, right?
Uh, no.
It doesn't?
Does not.
Okay. Like I said, they were, they were giving these out at the music festival, actually.
Really?
Yeah.
And this, this is for overdose?
This is, so this, the naloxone is Narcan, it's, it's, it reverses the overdose, uh, in people, so. Just a good idea to have in your home, because sometimes people, it, it doesn't have to be necessarily someone who's.
It's like a miracle drug, I mean, it takes people who are about to die and returns them to, to life.
I will say, without trying to overstate this, I have arrived on the scene and I said, it's too late, it's not gonna work. And it works, it's incredible, it's incredible, so, um. You know, someone has to breathe it in and they're not breathing, and then three minutes later they're coming to, it's incredible, so.
Do we have this in other places, or is it just at the police station?
So we, uh, at this point now, it's just in the police station, we came, um. We obviously, our officers have been carrying it on the road for years and have administered it successfully in many different occasions, uh, but now at this point. It always used to be something where because it was a controlled substance, there were prescriptions and things like that, and so it was, there were a number of hurdles that had to be overcome in order for. An agency or a person to hand these out, that's all been sort of cast to the side, it's, like I said, it's an extremely simple procedure.
So the idea is somebody can just pick up a kit?
Yeah, it's a five-minute training, you basically squeeze somebody's one nostril shot and you push it into the other one, that's it.
So hypothetically, we should all be doing this, right?
There's no reason that anybody should not have.
If you are not experiencing an overdose and you do administer it, like, is there an? There's no.
No. If someone not, if, for whatever reason, somebody was administered the drug and, and it wasn't, it, it does nothing, so, um.
There's a lot of lawyers.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, a wonderful product, like I said, um. People can come into the police department, we are not going to be recording. Who we give the information to, if people want to provide their information, they could be helpful, but we'll probably just ask for your zip code. Uh, we won't exclude anybody if they come from a different zip code than one oh five seven oh, but just for tracking purposes. Uh, that our partner was partnering with the Urban League of Westchester to, uh, provide this. They asked for that, but that is really it, and if someone declines to provide that information, we sure wouldn't hold back from giving them the kit.
Now, do you want us to advertise this, do you want us to put it in our Facebook?
So I, I think we're gonna wait until the officers are trained, so this way people don't have to necessarily come see me, again. The training, the train, the trainer is probably ten minutes long, and actual trainer, also training when somebody picks up a kit is maybe five.
What, does like the school have this type of thing, or do they have?
You know what, I'm not sure, uh, if they do, I wouldn't be surprised if they did, but I can reach out to them and make sure.
Yeah, it's good to hear.
I mean, not, yeah. Why not?
Yeah. So, yeah, so like I said, just keeps getting better throughout the presentation, and now the best part of the presentation, that was the last line, so.
No, no, it keeps getting better, I don't want it to end.
So, um. So good things happening, does anybody have any questions or anything that can follow up on?
It's been, uh. All around, I think, uh, uh, a pretty good quarter, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I, I will say, as I have said in the past. You have a great bunch of people, uh, on the force and, uh, you have been. Uh, th- there's a reason you have been anointed by your colleagues as the president of the Westchester Chiefs Association, uh, not only, uh. How a qualified police officer, but a great front end for a department, uh, in a place called Pleasantville, so, uh, very much appreciate that.
Thank you very much. We're gonna meet tomorrow, because there's been a lot of community or. A, a number of people who have a strong interest in understanding. The effect of the changes that we are making and what the, uh, in Memorial Plaza and on Manville Road, um. And whether those, um. Have shown improvement on Memorial Plaza in safety and then how we'll know whether they do in the future, so we're gonna talk about that tomorrow. Um, and just to let the public know, we will, you know, release, release any information that we have available, but also have a really good methodology for measuring. The effectiveness of, um, what we're doing going forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely found several questions about just the safety around, obviously the crossing. Um, over towards the Somme, you know, there's a lot of commuters and. I mean, I know that there's a, we have a time span, I just know that there's, there wasn't actually an area to cross at one point.
Yeah, there was a grim few days.
It was a grim few days and I, I kept saying, like, as I was walking over myself, I was like, it's gonna be done soon. Um, but I do think because it's gotten darker earlier, it's actually, you know, it. Poses a certain threat, I, I hope we don't.
Both sides are now open.
Uh, yes.
They are, I can confirm that.
Yeah. Both sides are, no. Uh, you can't access from like the left side over, so they're redoing the. Um, the one on Valvoline's side is not open, I mean, that's, that side one is not open.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, the Valvoline is not red.
So like you can't.
Soon, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be within days, and then I think also because of the light, you know, I mean, just. In, I, I think we were talking also, yeah, it's awkward, but just also like added security, um, I, I think we've mentioned about. Um, crossing guards and being able to support them, um, with very, very small added items like whistles, I know that the Sommo. Uh, crossing guard has done really well with that. Um, and if we can add it, I don't know if we can add it to all the crossing guards, are there limitations that they can have, just that was a question I had about.
No, I wouldn't say there are limitations, um, you know, I, we've, we definitely provide, you know.
The vests, yeah.
Vests and, and, uh, the stop signs, we give them the opportunity for stop signs, sometimes some don't like the stop signs, I mean, to be honest, you know, they're heavy and holding them out and.
They are.
Um, so. Uh, but we can continue to, to talk about, you know, what we can do to potentially make it so they're more obvious and.
Yeah, it, it's such a small addition, I think that if we can give them more, um, whistles, you know, they have the vests, I, I just know that we've seen. It's been helpful for the one that helps the children cross over the Sommo.
Great.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to all those i- in the department, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, um. Any comment from anybody, member of the board or anyone attending in the room or on Zoom? I see nobody raising their hand.
So, public hearing doesn't say. Pardon? I know we've got a lot of emails, we'll start with this all over, but that's not something we should land.
Hell, I, I don't know that there's much to say just at the moment, please don't, um. All right, with that, uh, I will share my screen and we will go into our resolution.
It says public hearing, that, well, is, is that just? It's automatically there.
If, if we had a, uh, an item, it would be listed under that.
We can't make it go away, unfortunately. Okay.
As long as it's blank, we will. All right, I've achieved it, three fifty-nine.
Okay, sorry. Uh, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes. Payment of three thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents to the town of Mount Pleasant for the repaving of the village-owned portion of Madison Avenue.
Is there a second? Mount Pleasant was paving and paved over to our side. Shared service, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Three sixty, David.
Consider authorizing the mayor to execute contract with Food Chester. I sort of liked Food Chester.
Yeah.
It's the Foo Fighters, there it is.
Thirty of twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Um, so just update that obviously, uh, to Food Chester, uh. Eric and, uh, Peter Rogan and I have been back and forth with advising council and clarified. Uh, the contract, I think, very straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Jamie, three sixty-one.
Peter's sharing it, you know, on Zoom too.
Thank you, yeah, sorry. Oh, uh, resolution.
Three sixty-one.
Yeah, it doesn't say approval of budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
That's it.
Okay, um, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, it's listed amount six million.
Six thousand. Six million.
Six million.
She was right the first time.
Oh, it is six thousand, sorry.
I wish it were six thousand.
Oh, boy. H zero five seven point five seven three zero ban proceeds pool reconstruction, although not six million.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, you can report the results of our bond anticipation note sale?
Yep, um, we, uh, went out to, to bid, uh, we got good competitive rates, uh, the money hit the bank account last week, so. We recognize it as.
What was our ban rate, revenue?
Uh, what did I say it was, two, was it two points something?
Oh, that's great.
Um, when we go out to a bond, it'll be higher than, yeah, but.
Right, so it's a bond anticipation note for one year?
Yeah, correct, um, and then as we get into budget season, uh, we'll talk about whether we want to make an interest payment or just principal.
Right.
Um, but, good news is, we got a good rate, money hit the account and, uh, we're ready to roll.
Okay.
And in the meantime, there's some interest to be earned as it sits there.
That's correct.
So, uh. Uh, just to be clear, a lot, a lot of commentary about public expenses, but, uh. Uh, this is a very big project for the Village of Pleasantville, but a six million dollar investment on a, uh, global infrastructure that we anticipate to have a life. Span of many decades.
Right.
All right, did we approve that, did we, did we vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, three sixty-two, back to you, Nick.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five. From the general per, general fund, hundred fifty-one thousand eight dollars and forty-eight cents, from the special fund, three hundred dollars, from the water fund. Ten thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents, from the capital fund, two hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. From the refuse fund, three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents, for a total of four hundred six thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. And the payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second? Comments or questions? I know these things with greater specificity as I'm now the last step of. Sign off on every single sheet, so.
Better not, it's the claims auditor.
That's me.
Is that new?
Yeah, it's, it's a project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, three sixty-three, David.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Minutes are attached, uh, comments, questions or corrections of the minutes?
No, I'm just abstaining, though it's not there.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One extension. Uh, motion passes, uh, with three votes. Yemi, three sixty-four.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Robert Santander, Recreation Assistant Panther Club Job Code zero two six nine, effective September second, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, three sixty-five, Cole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the title change from Recreation Assistant Part-Time Permanent Panther Club Job Code zero two six nine. To Recreation Leader After-School Program Part-Time Permanent Panther Club Job Code one zero four seven. Active November fourth, twenty twenty-four, for the following daily ID, Karu Morgan. Harvin Sa- Said, Iman Safai, Diana O'Halloran, Frederick Hill, Renee Friedman, Anita Levine, Emma. Bucheri and Donna Hadila.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is our HR, HR specialist. Alyssa?
Yeah.
It's a gift from County Human Resources.
But it's over.
It's over, probably vote.
Yes.
If you want to fix it, authorize this could use an S.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Your long national ordeal is over.
It's over.
Waiting for the next one.
Yes.
Uh, three sixty-six, David. Oh, it's not over, here it is.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes a title change from Recreation Assistant Panther Club Part-Time Available, Job Code zero two six nine. To Recreation Assistant Panther Club Part-Time Permanent, Job Code zero two six nine, effective November fourth, twenty twenty-four, for Jared Garcia and Bailey Rogers.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, three sixty-seven, Jamie.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby au- authorizes Mindy Rogers and Kristen Treza to attend the Tri-State Camp Conference in Atlantic City, New Jersey, for March ten. Uh, twenty twenty-four to March thirteen, twenty-five, I'm sorry, oh, sorry, March tenth, twenty twenty-five to March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. It will, I mean, we should say.
Is there a second?
Second.
Glad to hear, uh, Chris, Kristen Treza is our new employee in the Rec Department, I should have called her out earlier, and when I was mentioning the. The, uh, results of the Ragamuffin Parade and actually our, our downtown window painting. Happy to send them to a training conference, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Three sixty-eight, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the donation from Pleasant Cause In LLC in the amount of five hundred dollars for the purposes of planting a tree in the hobby parking lot.
Is there a second?
Where, where is that, a hobby parking lot?
The parking lot, uh, uh, opposite, uh. Southern table. Right?
Okay.
And there are a bunch of other trees to be planted there as part of a grant, right? Yes.
Oh, that's nice.
Very much appreciate this, Pleasant Cause In is the dog daycare operation at the end of Hobby. Uh, very much, you, you did.
Really? Oh, that's cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Pleasant Cause In, very much appreciated. David, it is, right?
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes a temporary parking restriction on the east side of Academy Street between Manville Road and Bedthrough Road on November fifth. Twenty twenty-four from six AM to nine PM, and be further resolved, those in violation of this temporary parking restriction will be subject to ticketing. At the Pleasantville Police Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is arises from, arises from the, uh, fact that, uh, the Board of Elections in their. In their wisdom, wants to be sure that all the elections they ran this year were in the same locations, and the, the high school was available actually for. Election, this election day, but not for the other elections, and as a result, they are using BRS for one of the district polling places. That is just almost exactly across the street from Lutheran Church, which is a polling place for another district. And so, we are, uh. Concerned about the congestion, uh, since neither of those places have any significant parking and trying to get ahead of it, uh. And thus are gonna ask people not to park on the east side of Academy. All in favor?
Aye.
About to tell people they could go well early and thereby.
Oh. Have at it, yes.
Yeah, so early voting is, um, available, um, Peter and I both voted yesterday. You can vote any, in any of the voting locations in Westchester County. So, there's one in Mount Pleasant, there's one in Mount Kisco, um, and there are others around, if you Google it, you will find them easily.
And if you look in your pile of mail, every registered voter in this election received a pretty big card. Uh, describing all the possible locations you could park, uh, to vote and, and all of the, the dates and times at each of those locations. Uh, lastly, you can also vote in Board of Elections if you, I think it's citizenparticipation.gov, something to that effect, if you Google Board of Elections, they can. Find that up as well, so. All right. Uh, all in favor, I think we voted, did we?
Uh, I don't think so.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, many ayes, three seventy.
Seventy?
I think so.
Uh, resolve that based upon the recommendation of the village assessor, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following small claim settlement for the village assessment year. Twenty twenty-three, uh, parcel ID nine nine point, uh, fourteen dash one dash seventy-nine, uh, point three. For sixty-two Dennis Lane, the original assessment was eighty-one thousand one hundred, the reduced assessment is seventy-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, making for a reduction in taxes of five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
That is attached. That is attached, uh, attached to the settlement, uh, from the small claims, uh, court. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. David, three seventy-one.
Resolve that based upon the recommendation of the village assessor, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following small claim settlement for the village assessment year twenty twenty-four. Parcel ID ninety-nine dash fourteen dash one, ninety-nine dot fourteen dash one dash seventy-nine dot five. Press fifty-eight Dennis Lane, original assessment seventy thousand eight hundred dollars, reduced assessment sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, reduction in taxes. Fifty-eight fifty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Likewise stipulated settlement attached, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Three seven-two, Amy.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the following new hires effective October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. So Liza Osmani, Recreation Leader After School Program, job class one zero four seven Panther Club. Budget code A seven three three zero point one zero one, hourly rate of twenty-two dollars. James Northcutt, Recreation Leader.
They're all in the same category, so you can just repeat the names.
Okay, great. And Raquel Bias Ceezo.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Good to see new hires.
See new hires, yeah.
Panther Club, very much, um, needed. Uh, three seventy-three, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Superintendent of Public Works to surplus the following vehicles and equipment. Um, fleet vehicle number four, uh, Ford, uh, F one fifty pickup truck. For Public Works Department, um. So.
It's a two thousand eight Ford.
Yeah.
You don't have to say, as stated in the record.
As stated.
I've just read the estimated salvage value.
Okay, right. So that one has an estimated salvage value of fifteen hundred dollars. Um, fleet vehicle number thirty-seven, also Ford, uh, Ford F, uh, three fifty pickup truck. Parks and Rec has an estimated salvage revenue of, uh, also fifteen hundred, uh. Number forty-six, John Deere J D fourteen twenty mower, Parks and Rec has an estimated salvage revenue of. One thousand, um, number one oh seven, Leaf Vacuum Parks and Rec has a value of five hundred dollars. Um, and then a Woods PRD, seven thousand two hundred brush mower, um. For Parks and Rec has, um, an estimated salvage, uh, revenue of two thousand five hundred dollars. For a total of seven hundred, seven thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
So if anyone's looking for a two thousand two John Deere mower, we have. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Three seventy-four?
Yeah.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement with Pleasantville Lofts for the twenty twenty-four Pleasantville Music Festival. Twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
Insolent.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they gave, uh, they were sponsored, they just didn't get this approved. So we have to check with them. All right, uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Pleasantville Loft is seven memorial. Delighted to have them as a, a music festival sponsor for last year and encourage them to join up this year. All right, that's the last of our regular, uh, agenda items. Um, we had a couple of items to continue back to in work session. And then an executive session to discuss contractual, legal and personnel matters. So is there a motion to return briefly to work session? For discussion regarding parking on Irvington Street and then to executive session as described?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Uh, thank you all. Uh, again, um, we encourage you to join us at. Our Veterans Day Ceremony on Monday, November eleven at eleven AM. Because that Monday normally our, our. Meeting date is Veterans Day. We are instead meeting at seven PM for work session, eight PM. Regular session at the Clinton Street Senior Center on Tuesday, November twelve. Look forward to seeing you. As always, you can pick up this meeting and, uh, uh. On-demand webcasts of previous meetings at PCTV seventy-six dot org. Thank you all and good night. All right, before we stop the Zoom for the executive session, uh, Irvington Street.
So, uh, pre-COVID, I wanna say two thousand nineteen, the board passed, uh, parking ordinance at the intersection of Marble Avenue. And Irvington Street due to complaints from property owners. That's Brit Ninja is on Irvington Street, gets very congested.
Yeah, I remember.
Um, so that was on the south side, uh, and it's basically from the intersection to. Uh, beginning of the driveway on the south side. Um, some of the same property owners have, um. Come back to the village and requested that a parking ordinance be put into effect on the north side of the street. Um, and speaking with the chief, he is of the same opinion. Uh, the, the road gets very restricted at the intersection and becomes very difficult to leave. Uh, and or enter, uh, Irvington Street, particularly in the, uh, afternoon around three.
So both the police and the homeowners are in agreement?
Uh, homeowners, it's commercial practice.
Commercial owners, yes.
I just shared this image, uh, of the scene.
Including the owner of Brit Ninja? Can you just share it?
No, so the owner of Brit, the, the, uh, the owner of Brit Ninja actually leases the property from, um.
Oh, okay.
So that, I, I will say, I think it's fair to say that the, those who are complaining about the situation. Uh, are in many cases complaining about conditions that are associated with congestion at Brit Ninja.
Correct.
Cause I, their parking lot is pretty limited, so I think that. I guess my concern is where are the cars gonna go during drop off and pickup if. They aren't allowed to park on either side of the street.
Well, the issue would be that they couldn't park on either side of the street up to. Essentially the bumper of the car I'm showing in this image, right?
Yeah, the front bumper, the front bumper of that.
At the moment, you're not allowed to park on the left side where those rocks are. And the proposal is that you would also not be allowed to park on the right side. The, the, this picture is essentially taken almost from Marble Avenue, right?
Yep.
So what room would that leave people?
So it, it leaves just beyond. I, I can tell you what happens. Uh, we have a similar problem with some other situations at schools and after-school activities in life where parents simply. Stack up, uh, cause they don't wanna park somewhere else and get out of the car and it creates really difficult circumstances. Um, uh, so I personally have driven by there several times to try to look at this, including at some peak moments and, um. I think it's, it, it is, it is fair to say that there are moments when it is highly, highly problematic. And part of the problem is that the cars back up. Essentially, this picture is taken standing at the edge of Marble. They're backing up to the point there, making a turn is difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess. My only concern is that it, it's a weird location, right? There aren't many alternative parking spots. And, yeah, you know, so I, I guess.
Can Brit Ninja do something where it's, it's a line as opposed to people being parked and they can just.
Look, there, there's been a lot of conversation about it and, and there was quite a bit of conversation at the time Brit Ninja came about. Uh, at, at the planning commission, there were some modifications to the parking lot. There have been some conversations ever since. The Brit Ninja, I think, has gotten busy, more power to them. They've also ended up owning a bunch of vans. Uh, and there's been discussion about, uh, off-site parking. There's been discussion about them. Finding other places for some of their employees to park. That has generated conflict elsewhere in the neighborhood. Um, uh, but, um. It, it's my view, having been a party to several rounds of this conflict, that this is not an unreasonable request by.
We also have no indoor, uh, this is the only place that it's like an indoor area to run around come the winter months to. It becomes really a lot more congested. I don't, I mean, I know, I, I think I've mentioned this before, there's no way that. Businesses don't necessarily talk to each other, like, for example, drilling's not talking to Brit Ninja to be like, hey, can we borrow tenor spaces? Or can we pay you?
There's quite a bit of talking going on. I, I will say among the various tenants in these buildings, there is very significant conflict over this.
And that pro clinic, right, is opening up.
Well, they have their own parking lot. Whether that's sufficient will be the next question.
Are they opening up?
They're opening up.
Their old.
In, in, in the former Prospero Building, uh, being renovated. Their, their parking lot is off Irvington. Essentially the first driveway.
Okay.
Did you wanna take a ride over and? You know, between meetings, we can reconvene on the topic?
Oh, definitely. I mean, I think drilling is a very underused parking spaces area. I really do.
Why? But they don't have any obligation to.
No, they have no obligation and they have no need for the extra funds that maybe somebody might pay them for parking. I just wonder if as a. A village, we have any say to say, would you, like, there's nobody there on the edge or, I don't know, I, not, it doesn't work. Such a huge entity.
So here's my suggestion. I, I, I suggest all of us should take a drive over there at some point in the next couple of weeks. And then let's can reconvene on this. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I, I used to do the drop off and pick up, so I'm pretty familiar, but, uh, but, uh. Yeah, I guess, yeah, let's, let's reconvene.
Yeah, all right. With that, is there a motion to go into the aforementioned executive session?
Yes, please.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most approved. I am going to, uh, end the Zoom. Uh, thank anyone who was watching, uh, for their time.